Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our December 11th Select Board meeting. I'll call this session to order at 7:00 PM if everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with public comment this evening, and per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring to the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment? No, okay. Thank you. We'll move on to our first agenda item, which is a governmental report on 400 Great Pond Road from our Steering Committee.
So I think tonight, are you guys gonna talk first, or?
No, he's gonna give a presentation, then we'll talk.
Okay, great.
Ours isn't on yet. For those of you at home, we have one in front of us, so when it looks like we're not paying attention or have our backs, it's not true. We really don't watch.
And it works so well in dress rehearsal.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Burcher. I'm an architect and a partner with a firm called Machado Silvetti, who work out of Boston. I've had the great pleasure of working with the 400 Great Pond Road Steering Committee for the past three or four or five months. We were selected to review the house at 400 Great Pond Road to do technical due diligence, which just means to review all that we can find out about the house there and the property, and look at some alternatives for how it might be developed. I'm going to give an overview of our professional observations, and then I believe a couple of members of the Great Pond Road Committee Steering Committee will come up and talk about their recommendations. We were not hired to provide necessarily recommendations to the Steering Committee. We were hired more to provide them with sufficient data that they could make their own recommendation to you. Okay. Yes, I can just keep going here. Okay. So when we started the Steering Committee...
Jeffrey, so you may want to just pull that microphone closer to your mouth, then just...
Yeah, sure, thanks. Right. When we started the process, the Steering Committee had already done a tremendous amount of great work, and part of that work, part of the outcome of that work was to establish five decision-making principles, and these were what guided a lot of our conversations as we brought information to the committee. And the five decision-making principles were these. First one, protect the water supply. We know that the house is located on the lake. It is the town's only fresh water supply. The purchase of the site and the house appeared to me, at least, to be primarily motivated by the protection of the water supply, and that was a single most important decision-making principle that was discussed. Option, or principle two, is provide open space. That is, how that would be defined, whether that's open public space, or open controlled space, or what exactly that meant, was part of a discussion that we had, but essentially it meant, could we provide some open space to the public in some way? Decision-making principle number three, respect appropriate levels of historic preservation. There is the historic house on the site, and we were looking at different ways in which different approaches to the house and to the property could respect something about the house. Four, provide some recreational opportunities as feasible, given the location and imperative of principle number one, in other words, protecting the water supply being the most important here. If it were also possible to provide some kind of recreational opportunities, we were going to look at that. This included walking recreational picnic on the site, perhaps some kind of hand-carry boat launch onto or from the lake. And then number five, fiscal responsibility, including the capital and the operating and maintenance costs. So at the end of the day, I think what the committee was looking for primarily from us was to give them solutions that were backed by information that we could gather on-site to provide a cost estimate for what those solutions might cost, and that's what we've done, and that's what we can present here today. So I think, you know, for those of you who have been down to the site, or on the lake, or seen it from a Great Pond Road, there is this wonderful historic home on the site. It was built in the late 1800s for the Sutton family by an architect called Machado. No relationship to the Machado who founded my office.
That's so interesting.
Oddly enough, quite a coincidence. It was a vacation. It was like a summer home, basically an open three-season pavilion. You can see it in number one there. Big wraparound porch underneath a kind of a room, like a great room or living room, at the center of that with a giant fireplace. A really nice place to, you know, be in the spring or the summer. Not a nice place to be in the winter when it was built, but very early on in its history, maybe within 20 years, the Sutons turned it into a full four-season lake house by extending the house, as you can see in pink there, and that pink was the service space, so kitchen, dining room, bathrooms, couple of staff quarters, and this made the house basically something that could be lived in all year round. Number three, this happened 1950-ish, where they added more quarters to service the house, additional bedrooms, and they also transformed pretty significantly the lake-facing side of the house by turning the porch into an interior space and also adding a full second, or almost a full second floor on the top, in which the primary bedroom is located now. And so four is what we have today. This is a house that was, again, designed as a boathouse, so it sits in the lake. Originally, there were openings. You can kind of see it in that small image on the left. You would literally go down the stairs and get in your boat and paddle out into the lake, and you'd paddle back in and get out of your boat and walk back up the stairs. And in fact, when we visited, each of the times we visited, at the bottom of the stairs was water. And this is the primary issue at stake here, which is that the basement is part of the lake, and the water comes and goes as it will. Whether there's high, you know, whether the water's high or whether the water's low, there's water in the basement, and apparently it's been so bad in certain cases that that water has reached the level of utilities and the boilers and the electrical systems. If you go down there, everything is wet, and that contact with the water between those systems and the lake basically represents a level of hazard to the, to the lakefront, or to the, to the freshwater source. So we looked at what could be done. Primarily, we looked at what could be done with this house, and secondarily, we looked at kind of what could be done with the whole lake. And these four scenarios that we studied, again, were more or less understood as kind of four ideal scenarios from the Select Board Committee, or from the Great Pond Committee, and they orient, these four options kind of oriented the work that we did to understand what would be required under each of them. One, two, and three, which I'll talk about, have to deal with the house itself, and number four is an option that has to do with the ownership of the whole piece of property. So I'll just start with one, and we have, I don't know, 300 pages of backup material on these options, and if anyone wants to see that report, I think it's public, and you can review more detail, but here I'll try to just give the overview. Option one is called retain and modify, because that's exactly what it is. So what you see there today is what would be kept. There's two issues with this approach. The first issue is that almost nothing there can be kept. The reason for this is because there's, for instance, no insulation in the walls, there's rot and mold in the ceilings, none of the systems are up to code, none of the electricals up to code, the mechanical systems are non-existent, all the light fixtures are wrong, all the windows are not energy compliant. So if you were, let's say, a private homeowner and you wanted to move into this house, you would have to basically take it down to its structure, down to its studs, and then rebuild the entire thing from the outside in and from the inside out. This is also true for the foundation itself. So the house sits on a stone foundation wall that, again, sits in the lake. Water's coming back and forth on that wall from both sides of the basement. It's been under a lot of stress. It's doing actually remarkably well, but if you were going to buy this house and live in it, or if you were the town and you were going to try to reuse this house, like a private home, you'd want to protect your investment, and this would also mean basically restoring all of the foundation walls, all the stone walls that sit below the house. That is a considerable amount of work because it's in the lake. So it's not just like on a piece of dirt somewhere where you can really easily get access to it, and you're not worried about what you're gonna do to the lake in the process of construction. Basically, for this, you have to build some kind of wall offset from the foundation wall to keep the waters back, so that you can get access to the full height of the walls, so that you can do other repair and repointing on the walls, or you have to do like underwater repair, which is considerably more expensive than that. Okay, but that's all if you just wanted to make it a private house, but this would need to be a public building, and there's certain codes for public buildings that would require additional accessibility standards that would add more cost to this to make it a publicly accessible building. Ramps, railings, widths of doors, access to the second floor, et cetera. So retain and modify, definitely possible, but definitely on the very high end of the cost, and you end up with basically what is there now, just it performs better, it performs according to the energy codes and to the accessibility standards. Option two, we looked at, is substantially less costly, which is to basically remove the whole house, repair the foundations, and build a three-season pavilion in the place of the original house. Yep, we're back. So this, this option is quite interesting because it replaces a kind of an original intention of this pavilion, which is to have a three-season space there. This would be covered. You could go and have a picnic there, you could sit, perhaps you could have a small gathering there in that pavilion, and think of like a park pavilion, like a park, a barn style park pavilion in a park. That might be something that could go here in terms of a style. This is very possible. We, we looked really closely at the structure. It doesn't seem feasible to try to save any of the above-ground structure for option two. It would be, again, sort of the removal of all of the house, the stuff above the ground, and then building, building a new pavilion on top of the repaired foundations. Number three is called removal, which looks like it does. You basically remove the house and you don't build anything in its place. In this case, you still have to repair the wall, and that wall, the repair of that wall comes with a pretty nice price tag to it. We did look at, could we just get rid of the wall also and try to return the shoreline to some kind of natural shoreline, but the cost of that is going to be even higher. And the reason for that is, is because the remediation to the, and the earthworks that would be required to control the storm runoff from the rest of the site would actually just re-contribute to the kind of cost. Plus, pulling all of that stonework out of there, the cost of pulling all the stonework out of there and protecting the water while you're doing that is basically the same cost as protecting the water while you're repairing it. So there's actually a benefit to kind of leaving it in place in terms of a cost and function, but there's also a benefit of leaving it in place in terms of sort of the most minimal nod to the history of the site. So remember, one of the principles was protect the water supply, provide public space, but also remember the history of the site in some way, so this actually does it. And the footprints there, you can tell stories, there could be little signs posted, something about the, the history and kind of what this was and what it meant to the town can be readily available. One, two, and three also include some reworking of the driveway and where cars might park so that we, right now, if you, if you happen to get access or you drove onto the site, you would drive from 400 Great Pond basically all the way down to right in front of the house and park in that kind of roundabout that you see. We'd like to get the cars as far away from the pond as possible, provided that there would be cars coming to the site in the case of any of these for just recreation or for use. So our options for one, two, and three also include kind of making some parking spots up closer to Great Pond Road and turning, putting a turnaround at the, basically at the top of the hill closer to Great Pond Road, so that no kind of normal vehicle traffic ever comes down, only emergency vehicle traffic would ever come down closer to the lakefront. Okay. Option four is a kind of an add-on option, which we looked at, which would be to say that in, if either two or three were to move forward, the conversion to a three-season facility or the full removal, we looked at whether or not we could find a subdividable plot on the property that could be sold to a private owner on which they could build their own private house. And this would be to basically try to recover some of the cost to the town for purchasing the property and for doing, you know, the work of any one, two, or three. We did work with the committee and those on it, and a lot of really rich debate about a potential to do this, which is to take this blue zone here and to turn that into a private lot. A lot of that private lot is a conservation area that wouldn't be allowed to be built on, and lackward of that private lot is other areas near the lake that also have restrictions on them in terms of buildability. But there is a buildable site in this blue area, and it could be accessed from basically the driveway that leads to the, the new public parking for the public's part of the site. This new private house also, to subdivide the plot also comes with a cost. It's not free to subdivide the plot besides the legal fees and the permitting fees and all of the kind of professional fees that would be associated with it. In order to do this, we'd actually have to route a new pedestrian path around that private property in order to provide public access from Great Pond Road to the lakefront or to the, the house or the pavilion or the foundation or whatever remained. So there's a pretty good cost that comes with doing that, again, because you're in this kind of conservation world and near the lake, and you have to control storm runoff, and that control, the storm runoff, is quite expensive. So how expensive? Okay, so alternative one, or approach one there, if you can see, it's obviously the tallest. I'll just try to describe this chart so everyone's on the exact same page about it. The very, very bottom line is the total cost. That's in millions of dollars to do any of these scenarios. The blue box that says foundation and retaining wall, that's the cost to repair the foundation and the retaining wall in place. It's pretty consistent for all four schemes, or all four alternatives. The demo is the demo of the house itself, which in nearly all of them, you're, well, in two, three, you're demoing the entire house, rebuilding back a portion of it, and in alternative one, again, you're basically demoing the house down to its structure. So that site, or that cost is pretty consistent. Site development is the, is the cost for that new driveway and those relocated parking spots that I mentioned, and then in the brown three-season pavilion, that's the cost of the actual pavilion, and the restore and reuse, that's the huge cost to basically rebuild a house, or to build a house in the place where a house already exists. That's how I always like to define these kinds of projects. This is why that's quite expensive. So on the far right is something called, what we call the base cost. This is the absolute minimum that would need to be done in order to protect the water supply. That's the work on the foundation and the retaining wall and the demolition. You could just demo the house and leave the foundation wall there, but that represents a continuous, ongoing hazard to the lakefront in terms of public safety and also a hazard to the freshwater supply, because it would just continue to degrade in place. Alternative three is demo, repair the foundation walls, and just leave that site kind of open like we had mentioned. So that alternative three is 1.96 total cost, and we had cost estimators look at this several times to get the numbers right. These are probably a little conservative because we're quite early, there's been no design work done. This is analysis of existing conditions and kind of a prediction about what the ballpark cost for each of these scenarios might be. They all, one, two, three, and then plus the fourth one with the, with the split site, they all protect the water supply. They, they all do the kind of main goal. Public space, or the provision of public space is available in all of them. What exactly that public space is, what's the nature of it, how, like, are there, is it open, you know, nine to nine, is it open 12 to 12, like, is it hand-carry boats? All of those things are not, they're not contemplated thoroughly in this report, but all of them can provide public space of some kind. They all, I think, do nod to the historic quality of the site and the historic buildings, either by just having the foundations there and using signage and other narrative structures to tell about the site, or through, like, keeping the actual building in place. I think they all also provide, you know, again, potential for recreation, the nature of which is, could be decided at a future date. And finally, they're all fiscally responsible if that's what you want to do. In other words, there's no kind of over-cost or overreach in the caution of each of these. These are all pretty much like, if that's what you want to do, here's the minimum cost to, to, to take on that project. So with that, maybe I'll, and if there's any questions for me, you could ask me now, or would you guys like to jump in?
Maybe Jerry and I can just sit here if that's all right, Jeffrey?
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Hi. Peter Boynton, member of the 400 Great Pond Committee, Planning Board member and harbor master and resident 320 Stevens Street.
I'm Jerry Gerald Brecker, 488 Pleasant Street, a member of the Steering Committee. And I'll just start by saying that we've been meeting as a Steering Committee since, I believe, November of last year, almost a year's worth of meetings.
Actually, I just looked. Our first meeting was December 7th.
December 7th, so we're just about a year.
Just about a year into this.
And, and I appreciate the opportunity of serving on this committee. I would say the committee was diverse in every way, including the most important way. That is, it was a good deal of diverse opinion. Nobody came into this committee with any particular idea that they were gonna try to push on anyone, and, and there were a lot of different ideas, and, and no small amount of disagreement and, and reasonable conflict along the way. But in the end, we did come up with a unanimous recommendation, which Peter will talk to in detail. I just want to say that the, that the spirit of the recommendation was to preserve the town's interests in this property in the best way possible, that is, giving the town the opportunity to do more later if, as and when, future Select Board, town meeting, additional committee came to the conclusion that they wanted to do more than, than what we're gonna recommend, and to keep it as fiscally responsible as possible. The town paid a lot of money for this property to protect the water supply. That was the main theme running through all of our deliberations, and our goal was to spend whatever was necessary to preserve that overriding goal, namely preserving the water supply, but not any more than needed to be spent at this time. And so we want to put the town in the position where this property is owned by the town and what will happen going forward, consistent with the public use, et cetera, will be for the future to decide. But we've made a recommendation that we think makes sense for now, and with that, I'll let Peter describe it.
Thanks, Jerry. I'd like to quickly identify the 11 members of the committee that you appointed. Seven of those members are here today: Richard Valencourt, Gerald Brecker, myself, John Simons, Guillermo Vincennes, Jim Stamford, Norma Lockman, Jean Enright, Stephen Foster, John Weir, and Ron Rudis. And I completely agree with Jerry that we had great diversity, and much of that was of opinion and view. We had very vigorous discussions, and they were terrific sessions, really. Our chair, Dick Valencourt, did a great job pulling this group together. So we met with residents, abutters, builders, community groups, and made site visits to the buildings and property, worked with DPW for the RFQ to hire a qualified consultant who you've heard from, because we felt whatever recommendation we came forward with, the very first question's gonna be, well, what does this one cost and what do the other ones cost? So we thought that was a necessary step. And just as a caution, the charge to the consultant was rough order of magnitude. So our unanimous recommendation was for alternative three, removal, and we have a number of reasons that we felt that was the most appropriate recommendation. First, greatest degree of protection for the water supply, which was our number-one decision-making principle. Two, it was the least cost, and the fiscal responsibility, we felt, was very important. Three, it maximizes open space on the property, which was another one of our decision-making principles. Four, there is a nod to the historic element with the foundation left behind and some appropriate plaques. We also noted that the extensive changes that the owner made to the property really did not respect the original architecture of the property, so preserving it as it exists today didn't really represent that original boathouse architecture. Also, fully open space for recreation of some form, and as Jerry noted, an important element of our recommendation was that alternative three, removal, leaves other options open. So for example, the possibility of a three-season pavilion, and that pavilion could have the same profile as the original boathouse structure, and would then also have a nod towards the historic element. It also leaves open the possibility of a private house down, down the line, and the possibility of other recreational opportunities like hand-carry boat launch, that sort of thing. So that's our unanimous recommendation, and was a terrific committee. I really appreciate the opportunity to work with everyone and the support of the town to go through this process, and we have seven members here. If you have questions, I'm sure we'd be happy to address them.
Thank you to the consultants and to all the board members for all your work. I know you guys have been working really hard over the past year, so I'll open it up to the board for questions, everybody. So I'll open it up to the board for questions, everybody.
Yeah, I guess I'll start. So if I'm understanding you correctly, with recommendation of option three, you're not saying no to option two, you're just saying not now. Is that a fair way to state it?
Correct. And there was a lot of discussion with option two. I was really fond of that option for a whole bunch of reasons, but at the end of the day, we all came together with three removal. But yes, definitely an option down the road, and, you know, part of our discussion was there might come a time when there's some type of grant money available for that, or other funds.
And did the committee have an opinion on option four on the add-on at all?
There was a lot of discussion. I'll let Jerry talk about that, but my sense was, at the end of the day, given the site preparation that was necessary, and the cost involved, didn't seem to be adding a lot.
Is it a wash, kind of, yeah?
It may or may not be a wash. Maybe there'd be more benefit to the town financially, but in, just as you recognize with respect to the potential of putting a pavilion up later, it's not a decision that needs to be made now, and depending on what else happens with the property. I mean, it's a gorgeous piece of property, the views from down there are spectacular. People from the town ought to be able to use it as freely as possible, to the extent that there's a house in the middle of it, and people walking by and all that. I mean, there's, there's, there's conflict. And in the end, the, the, the likely financial benefit to the town is a lot less than I had once hoped it would be and anticipated. So it's, again, it's something that could be done anytime, if it makes sense, but in the meanwhile, the, the opportunity for people to, to use that property in nice weather, I think should trump that.
If I could just add to that, we had a lot of discussions about how to articulate the costs involved here, and as you can see with this chart, and the consultant did a great job of helping us with this, there's some costs across the board, no matter what option is selected. And part of what we had to sort of reconcile to was, those fixed costs highlight the fact that protecting the water supply is, is not easy, and it's not cheap. When you're working not on the water, but in the water, to do that safely for the drinking water supply costs money.
Any of the members of the group have any thoughts as to what we could possibly apply for grant money, or? I said from the very beginning, gee, this old boathouse would be really good, if we'd be on the map with TV and everything, tongue-in-cheek, but is there much in the way of available funds for something like this?
It's not something that we, that we looked at.
Okay, fair enough.
I feel like you never really know what kind of grants are going to pop up, and we might be able to make a connection to make it applicable.
Maybe you can speak from.
To answer your question, Rosemary, in the past, there have been rounds of state funding for watershed protection, but they tend to be cyclical. So I think Jean certainly is very much on top of those, all those opportunities that come up, because they, they're not always consistent year by year, so you have to really pay close attention to it. So that might be one possibility down the road.
It's just not something that the committee worked on, so there could be a wide range of opportunities, or maybe not so many, but we haven't gone down that road yet.
We haven't exhaustively pursued that yet, no, correct.
The one thing that I, I liked that you did throughout this whole process is you, you as a group, explained why this property is really important to the town because of the watershed, and that's something that I spoke about so many times before we even acquired it, that, you know, yes, you know, the property was expensive, maybe a little bit more than I thought we should be spending, but then when you back it up into what it, it could ruin with a bad accident, I mean, those, an oil tank leaking starts at probably a million dollars, and just goes up from there, right next to the treatment plant. I think we all felt pretty strongly that we did have to protect this property some way, somehow, because it is our wonderful water supply.
And one of our members, Willie Vincennes, was critical to doing the watershed protection report in 1987, and 40 years of water system and water protections experience, so it's just one example of a lot of experience we had, and, and expertise on this key issue of protecting our only drinking water supply.
I, I think it's like that saying, you know, you don't plant a tree for yourself, you plant a tree for the next generation. And in this case, you know, we're protecting the water, but we're also protecting it for generations to come.
Oh, absolutely.
So, yeah, it was expensive, but.
We had to do it.
Yes.
We really had to do it. Oh, it would be drinking part of the Merrimack. Not that appetized.
I'm curious, in any of the scenarios, we talk about public access and getting people, it's obviously not a very accessible site for pedestrians, so cars have got to get there, did the committee study how many cars you think you'd be comfortable with? Because obviously, that's a big impact.
So we did talk about that at pretty great length, and the thing we all agreed with was, we didn't want the cars down by the water.
Yep.
And there was no room along Great Pond Road, and the conservation restriction on the upper part of the property does not allow for that. However, the stretch of the driveway from Great Pond until just before you start heading down the hill seemed to allow for perhaps 10 or 12 angled parking spots at the top of the hill.
Is that what I see in the option four?
Yes.
Okay, got it, okay.
And then there would be a walking path?
Yes, and some sort of road access would remain, really for emergency services. Maintenance, yep.
Does this removal include removing the garage that the fire?
So that was also quite a point of discussion, and the committee, committee's recommendation, the sort of the full recommendation, is actually all structures, including the garage, but for the garage not to be removed until the town has been able to complete the new storage facility that I believe the fire department is currently using that garage for. And I don't have the details on that, but one of our members was the fire chief, and he pointed that out. And, and the full recommendation also included a conservation restriction all along the waterfront that the town would establish with certain carve-outs. And, I mean, these are, details are in the minutes, but a carve-out, for example, if there was ever any type of water supply or treatment emergency, and the town needed a waterfront property adjacent, nearly adjacent to the water treatment plant, that that CR would allow that sort of carve-out.
I never thought of that. That's, that's very thoughtful thinking.
But we did, we did want to protect the property with a CR, and then we discussed, well, wait a minute, what if the town needed it, and back and forth, and back and forth. So appropriate carve-outs, we felt, were the best way to do that.
Are there any, with the demo, are there any steps that need to be taken as far as the structure being historic, or?
There was actually discussion on that as well, that one of the abutters, among others, suggesting that there were articles in and on the house, the circular windows, and there's other examples, and, you know, we, we didn't go into great depth, but just observed to the people, asking that, you know, if the town's going to do that, it's a sort of town auction, there's a process for sort of excess property to, to do that.
If the, if the building is deemed historic, then you have to wait 12 months before you can knock it down.
If the Historic Commission imposes that delay.
Yes, however, the deeming of it is formalized.
And that's our local historic.
That's not something that's in place at the moment.
At the moment.
So it, it's really up to the town when to do this, but I think it was pointed out to us by our consultants, and by the town facilities management, that it's not an inexpensive thing to keep this house in its current condition. The longer it's there, the more it rots away, the more hazard there is. So this is the sort of thing that, you know, ought to get on somebody's agenda, the money needs to be figured out, how, how it's going to be paid for, and then move ahead as quickly as possible. But as quickly as possible might, just might entail a 12-month delay.
Delay.
As far as we know, the house is listed on the MHC, which is the Massachusetts Historical Commission, but it's not provided any.
Could you speak up for a moment?
Yep, it's, the house is listed, as far as we know, on the MHC, the Mass Historical Commission, but it's not afforded any particular rights. It's not under any restriction that would prevent you from.
Mowing it.
Demoing it.
Okay.
As soon as you would like.
And it's real, at its current state, it's not really the historic structure that it once was.
So the neighbors' concerns, I think, were apt, though, and I think it's wise to think about doing some kind of what we would call like mediation on this, which would be to like.
Take parts.
Take parts out, document it, make sure it's like in the record in a really good way. We couldn't find original plans, we haven't done them, or like original elevations of it. It might be something to take on, to kind of take that history and at least lock it away.
And I am assuming it's in great enough disrepair, there's no value for anybody to, you know, buy it for a dollar and pay to move it to a different location, as.
Well, we, we looked at that as well. We, we brought in somebody who moves houses, and if that house were sitting in the middle of a field, and you wanted to move it a mile away, it would be some fraction of the cost of picking it up out of the lake, and then moving it, say, back up the hill. I, I will say that the, the, the property where it is, is drop-dead gorgeous, the views are spectacular, but since it was originally designed as a boathouse, some places, you kept your boats, and you went and you had lunch, there was no living space in it, it was none of that, it was just a, a pure recreational boathouse. Subsequently, it really has been garbaged up, okay? The, the original lines, the gorgeous porch, the roof, all that has been changed, and not for the better. And all the additions that went on afterward were not terribly wonderful. So it, you know, if it were, if it were an empty space, and you had a gazillion dollars, it would be a spectacular place to put a new building, and you could do something really wonderful, but I don't think that's on the town's agenda. And remember, that, that property was for sale. They were trying to sell it for three and a half million dollars, and it was clear from looking at it that that would only have been the start. You'd have had to put another five million into it to get it to where it needed to be, so it's not.
Was that a question, what are we carrying for annual maintenance upkeep costs? It's, what are?
No, it's not, it's not a lot.
We were told it was around 50,000.
Oh, is it, okay.
50,000 for maintenance annually?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think that's right.
Do you think that included the removal of the, like, the work we had to do?
I don't think that's correct. The number I had in my head was actually 12, but I will, I will check with Steve. I can't imagine, I mean, it doesn't cost us $50,000 to maintain one of our buildings, and that building has been completely mothballed and winterized.
Yeah, the number that was mine, I was 20, but.
Yeah, so I will check on that.
Somewhere between those two.
Yeah.
So you're, you're thinking more the winter, winterization costs, keeping it so that...
So we have, yeah, the winterization costs are keeping the cost down for us. I mean, we did immediate work, right? We took the oil tank out immediately, we put lights, security lights in, so we had some work that we did in the first year. We put in the gate, there's a bunch of things we did, just in order to kind of make the property stable, and to make sure that we didn't have people breaking in, et cetera. We have, obviously, we insured it, we have vacancy insurance on it, so that's a little bit more, but, I mean, that, I think, was 3,000. So I will, I will check on the final number. We have this on the agenda tonight, not for a vote, we wanted you to get the report, and then have time to think about it, maybe get some feedback from the public, if anyone wanted to call you or talk to you about it. What my recommendation would be after you accept, if you decide to accept alternative three, would be that we amend the fiscal year '25 capital plan to do the design in this fiscal year, and then do the work in fiscal year '26. I think the design's probably going to be rather complicated, I would think, just because they're going to want to have a pretty comprehensive plan on how they're going to do the removal and the demo in the water. So that's probably what I would recommend, and I would say probably around 130,000 for design.
So the modifications to the foundation, kind of jumping off the design, does that include sealing it off and filling it in?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, so how are you, what are you going to backfill it with?
Just with dirt.
Just with dirt, so it's not like flowable fill or anything?
That's not what is contemplated in the cost estimate, it's just with dirt.
Okay, it's just with dirt, okay.
And I think the dirt is adequate, according to our coastal engineers.
Okay.
And I, I think it was to strengthen or, or make sure that the foundation was not going to fall down on us.
Oh, yes, you have to still do repair to the foundation on both the outside and the inside wall, and then fill it in.
And then where the water's coming in, that gets blocked off.
Yeah, the water wouldn't be coming in anymore.
And possibly may need a railing, because there's a drop-off.
That was not my question, yeah.
Yeah.
There's going to be a railing, okay, for public safety, obviously.
The necessity of a public railing is, I think, still to be determined.
Yep.
But to, the point that was made about the possibility to go to option two later in the future, that wall is really solid, and it will be able to support a pavilion in the future, which is just to say that it can certainly support a railing.
Right.
And we did talk about a pavilion which was nothing more than a, you know, shed-type roof, or a three-season pavilion that mimicked the shape, the profile of the original boathouse, which really was architecturally really very nice.
And that's more cost-effective to take it down and rebuild a new one versus?
We talked, we talked about, could we dismantle the current structure down to its original boathouse shape, and that was sadly more expensive.
More, right, and then you've got materials that aren't meant to be exposed to the weather, right?
Yeah.
It's definitely possible to do that. It will be more expensive, and half of the roof isn't original, it's been modified.
Yep, modified, yep. Last question, I promise. The demo costs include protecting the lake as you demo?
Yes.
But they're rough order of magnitude.
Of course. Anybody else have any questions?
Awesome work, yeah.
Just want to say thank you.
Yeah, great work.
I'd like to just, you know, take it time to, again, thank the committee. I know Peter, you're.
Thank our chairman.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, really, the committee had a, a great group of people that has brought so many skills to the table, you know, just John Simons, who's probably the most experienced planning board member in the state, not the country, Jerry, who's brought a development background from MIT, and just has so many other gifts that he offered us, Willie, who's an environmental engineer, was invaluable, Jim Stanford, DPW Director, you know, of course, brings so much to the table, and the person that sits in the back of the room all the time, Jean Enright, who really was the heart and soul of getting everything, you know, scheduling meetings, making sure everybody was on track, just amazing, Steve Foster, who brings, you know, not only his building, you know, as the building commissioner, but also has a wealth of knowledge in construction and architecture, Peter, who is our, not only our Harbor Master, but also a member of the Planning Board, brings an incredible wealth of information, Ron Rudis, who was part of the Historical Commission, Norma, who is just a steady rock for us, and, you know, communications experts, who always polished up all our communications before they went out, and just had some tremendous ideas on how to move forward. And then, of course, John Weir, who, again, is not only the fire chief, who brings the safety aspect, but also has a lot of construction experience, too, so, you know, so there's a lot of experience there, and it was really a great group. And like Jerry said, everyone came in with different ideas, and, and really, over the course of a year, and somewhere around 18 to 20 meetings, were able to come to a consensus with the help of our great consultants here, who also, Jeffrey, do you want to recognize the other two members of your team that are here tonight?
Mary and Amanda here, from my office, who've been all the drawings and the data.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it was, it's a great collaboration between a lot of people that, you know, got us to this point, and I think, like, like Jerry said, there was a lot of discussion that went on, a lot of rigorous discussion that went on. By the end of the day, you know, everybody kind of walked out of that room with some consensus feelings, so.
As I've mentioned to you before, Dick, it's you, this, this committee is a blue-ribbon committee, that it's really clear that you all have great expertise in different fields, top-notch, so thank you, thank you all very, very much.
Yeah, you're charged with a big task, and we gave it to you, it was an unexpected task. Well, it was an unexpected task, too, we weren't, wasn't on our. Well, it was an unexpected task, too, we weren't, wasn't on our radar, vigilante.
I'm curious how surprised all of you are when we're here.
Thank you all for your hard work. You could all stay. So this will come back on a future agenda for you to make a final recommendation. We will move on to new business, and our first item is to suspend the application for use of the town common so that we can review our policies based on recent case law and events that have happened.
John has a voice that projects.
Um, so this is a recommendation coming from the manager's office that we go ahead and suspend our applications to use the common until we finalize a new policy. We are working on a new policy with town council now, our review of our current policy. Any applications that we receive up to date, of course, we can take action on, which I believe is only one. Um, we don't really have a lot of events that so much are happening on the common in the winter months, so this is a good time for us to take a, a peek at it. And so we're just recommending that we don't take any applications until we get that reviewed.
It's the one, there's one outstanding application.
There's one outstanding, yes, it is Black History Month banners. Yep, and that, we'll be talking about that again at your January eighth meeting.
Madam Chair, move the select board to suspend any use of common applications pending review of the use of common policy.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, our next item is to appoint Kyle, Kyle Warner to our new, as our new accountant, town accountant. And I'll let Melissa.
Of course, I'm, I'm happy to introduce Kyle Warren, Kyle would be filling our town accountant position. Um, this is not a new position, but it is a different position, so if you remember correctly, Lynn Savage has been serving as both the finance director and the town accountant for the last eighteen years. Um, and Lynn has given us the notice that she will be retiring, um, at the end of July, so we are planning now for our succession of Lynn. Um, our assistant accountant moved on to another community, and we took that opportunity to turn that into an accountant position. Kyle is a wonderful candidate, he will be joining us from Triton Regional School District in Byfield, where he currently serves as the Director of Finance and Operations. Before that, he worked as Powell's and Sullivan and actually did our audit, so he's very familiar with the town. Um, Lynn, I think, may have actually clapped when she saw his resume come through, so I was excited. Um, and his references were impeccable, so we are very excited to welcome him. And the board members all did either get to meet with him, or just chat with him in advance of this appointment as well.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, it was very nice to meet with you, Kyle, and we're excited to work with you. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board appoint Kyle and Warren as town accountant through February first, 2027.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
We can't wait for you to start, Kyle.
Now get to work.
You're here at the right time here. It's budget season, it's term meeting season.
Yep. All right, um, we will move on to item C, which is to expand our flood relief program to include mold remediation, and Lori, if you could speak to that.
Um, yes, so as you remember, at the last meeting, you had decided to expand the program to include more than just appliances. And we've been getting several applications for mold remediation, and it's, um, the way we're, when we're reviewing it, you're looking at it as, you don't cover the remediation, but we're saying we're covering flooring and walls, and if some people had the remediation, they would be saving their floor and walls, so it kind of made a little sense to come back and see if you would be willing to include that kind of remediation as an eligible expense, but keep the rest of the program the same. We have about half of the money left, um, just to correct something that I had said at the last meeting, that was ARPA funds, they are not ARPA funds, it was the discretionary fund from Columbia Gas. So there's, there's about a hundred and twenty-six thousand left. I, um, have a few pending applications, but, um, other than that, I think when we open this up, there'll be several more of this. I've already gotten applications that we've had to deny, so I'll be able to reach out to those people and let them know that that expense could be covered if you're willing to do that.
How many applications do you think, ballpark?
For just this?
For the mold, yeah.
Yeah, there's probably, I don't know, ten, fifteen.
I think it's a great idea, because thankfully, they didn't have to replace, or they found a way to avoid replacing all their drywall.
I feel like they, they mitigated their damages by doing it, and they're kind of being penalized by not being able to get reimbursed for it, so.
I think when I was talking about flooring and walls, I assumed there was some level of mold that was covered in that, so I didn't even think of this level of detail.
Yeah, and most, a lot of the, you know, some of the people who have been reimbursed had to do some of that, but they also had appliances and things, so they've already qualified for the twenty-five hundred. But these are people that just really had to do just really the remediation, and they lost some personal items.
No, I think it's a great idea, so thank you for bringing it.
You've got to take care of mold, it's just a really bad thing. It just grows.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board expand the emergency flood relief program to include mold remediation as an eligible expense.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to appointments, and I will pass it over to our subcommittee.
Brad and I have been busy. And we're, would like to bring forward the following people to all of you. Um, we met with Adam Bagni and would love to appoint him to the Community Preservation Committee. He's, um, been in town for several years and is really just looking to get involved. Uh, he has young children, he's not planning on going anywhere anytime soon, and, um, Brad, you can talk about that, who happens to be here.
I'm just, I'm just going to add him, I thought Adam was going to just present incredibly well, full of energy, which I think is going to be, be great, a great addition to CPC. Uh, Brad, happens to be a neighbor of mine as well, is, specializes as a stormwater engineer, which is a perfect fit for Conservation Commission and everything that we've seen. Um, a lot of our stormwater issues that, that, you know, I think is what prompted Brad to actually apply initially and get interested, so we're happy to recommend Brad for, for this committee.
We spoke with Matt Ginsberg, who we would like to recommend for the Zoning Board of Appeals. He actually has prior ZBA experience, um, and I think he actually lived here, moved away, came back, and has been here for quite some time now.
chaired the ZBA in Charlotte.
Yes, and now is ready, uh, you know, is ready to, to sink his teeth in and get involved in the community. So with his prior experience, he's also a lawyer, and he's ready to jump in. And then Anthony Puzo, we met and would like to recommend for the Sustainability Committee. He also just moved, I mean-
Moved back.
Moved, just moved back to town, we had a lot of people who moved away, coming back. And he was super enthusiastic about joining the Sustainability Committee, and I'm really excited for them because, you know, they're always sort of looking to increase their numbers, and someone with new energy will be great.
Yeah, it works, it works in sustainability for his job to begin with, so he's, he's very much committed to it, so.
Thank you for all your hard work.
All right.
Any questions? I'll take a motion.
I'll move the select board appoint Adam Bagni to the Community Preservation Committee through June thirtieth, 2024. Bradley Mustaine to the Conservation Commission through June thirtieth, 2024. Matthew Ginsberg to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member through June thirtieth, 2026. And Anthony Puzo to the Sustainability Committee through June thirtieth, 2024.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, we run on volunteers, so we appreciate all your, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, thank you for coming. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. All right, um, we are going to move into licensing, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll motion we move into licensing.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Over to you for-
Thank you, Madam Chair, we are now on licensing. Uh, item A, we have an application from Andrew DeFranco of AK Eaterie LLC, doing business as Wrap City Sandwich Company for a common victory, an entertainment license at 1280 Osgood Street. So as you, would like to come up and chat about your, about your business?
How you doing, Mr. DeFranco, this is my wife Kimberly, uh, we started AK Eaterie, uh, this past year. Uh, we basically, we're a franchise, there's eleven of them in New Hampshire, one in Florida, and we'll be the first one in Massachusetts in North Andover. Uh, with that going forward, um, we offer all different types of sandwiches for all, all different types of the, of the world. Uh, not just including wraps, we also include sandwiches, flatbreads, and salads. Basically, all of our food that we tried, we, we source is regionally sourced, so everything is all from either New England or around us. Uh, including not only the food that we, we buy, also our, our potato chips as well. They're all from Maine, Maine roasted potatoes. Um, everything is roughly here, so I feel like it would be a good fit for the town, the community. Uh, I've spoken with a few of the other, the town clerk, for example, Dawn, uh, she can't wait to get in there.
I can't wait for the chips.
Um, yeah, but yes, we're really excited to get this going. Uh, I think it would be really, uh, really good spot for the town, especially we, we are going to have, there's a hundred and fifty condominiums behind us that have roughly housed three hundred people. Uh, with that also said, they're planning to do more construction down the other end, more towards four ninety-five, and there will be also be more condominiums in there as well. So it's kind of, there's not a lot of restaurants really that, that are in there. We're not trying to get a liquor license or anything like that. Uh, it's just kind of like a nice casual, family, family casual place, like go for a Friday night, just have a couple bites to eat, enjoy yourself, and then proceed on.
Now, what's a landmark near your location? I should have looked it up.
The new Starbucks.
Yeah, it's, uh, the, the address is 1280 Osgood Street.
First and properties, yeah.
Uh, it's, uh, where there is Starbucks there, a couple other stores that are there, the Liquor Junction.
Andy Amos.
Andy Amos is in there. I know exactly where you are.
Oh, okay.
That's what I thought, but I didn't know if there was something new that opened up a little further down.
No, that's everything.
You'll have to look at Amazon traffic.
Yeah, so that, I was actually in talks with them as well. Uh, I didn't realize that that was actually supposed to employ fifteen hundred people plus, so that's actually a huge help as well.
I was going to say, well, then that was a really good decision.
I didn't know that when I did it.
Just, just good luck.
Well, we're very excited for you guys to be here and open up. It's been talking about it for quite some time. Every time I drive by, I'm like, the kids, you guys are ready yet, so.
Especially those chips, we're really excited.
Have you ever heard of Royal Feast? That was an old chip manufacturer, do you remember that?
No, that's-
Grand Estate Potato Chip Factory.
Grand Estate was my favorite.
Oh, I love Grand, I miss Grand Estate.
So the actual, the franchisor of this company, Wrap City, uh, he's just recently purchased a, a large industrial warehouse, and, uh, we have two fryers right now that roughly can cook three hundred pounds of potatoes in an hour from raw all the way to finished product. Uh, and with that being said, he is also in the works with the town and everything else to try to make that old Grand Estate Potato Chip Factory a real thing again in Derry.
Really?
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
So.
I miss the buckets.
Royal Feast, you had those two, they came in, in buckets, and they were all holding right on site, so it sounds like you're doing-
Oh, that was the best, so that's still active, or not active, but it's still in Derry, huh?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, brand, well, the, the old Grand Estate Potato Chip Factory is gone now, that's a new plaza.
Yes, that's, yes.
And, uh, but the, in Derry, he just purchased this industrial park.
Well, that's exciting.
Yes.
Sounds like you've got it well thought of.
Yeah.
It's all in your head, boom, 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 boom.
Yeah, I, I tell a lot of people a lot about it, and I'm excited about it, so.
We're excited, too. So when are you going to open?
Uh, well, hopefully with this, we're ready to open, so.
All right.
Your open might not be set down until we give you the-
Any outdoor seating?
Uh, no, no, so the restaurant, it only holds twenty seats, uh, uh, within the restrictions of the, uh, health code and everything like that. We have passed all our inspections from building all the way to health and fire, police, everything is good. So in that aspect, we're all set.
Any other questions?
All good.
I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move, I'll move to approve the application of Andrew, Andrew DeFranco of AK Eaterie LLC, DBA, Wrap City Sandwich Company for a common victory license and an entertainment license at 1280 Osgood Street.
I'll second that.
Motion on a couple of seconds.
Excitement here, huh?
Everyone's excited.
The chips would have been good if you brought the chips.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can do to help you along, just, you know, to talk.
Well, that's the other thing, too, uh, everyone that I seem to get in town contact with, talking with, and everything like that, everyone's also been very helpful.
Glad to hear that, good to hear.
They don't, they don't really care about, like, the big, uh, the big stores coming in here, so I was kind of worried because it is a player franchise, but I feel like it was small enough franchise, not like a Subway or anything like that commercially based, so it's still kind of like a small-town sandwich shop, but with big, big flavor options.
We're excited, we're happy for you.
Yeah, I'm very excited.
Best, best. Kind of a good tagline.
All right, uh, on to item B, annual license renewals. Uh, I guess B one will start with complete applications.
Sure, so I can run through this memo if that helps.
That would be great.
We have a few businesses that are not renewing for 2024, so we have Chipotle, who is not renewing their liquor license, but will be renewing their common vec in their entertainment. We have Nikki's Famous Roast Beef, who will not be renewing their liquor license, but will be renewing their common vec in entertainment. We have Harrison's, um, who is not Body Works Auto Body Class Two license, not renewal, and Bob's Auto Parts Class Three, non-removal. We have two businesses, um, who are trying to expand their, their entertainment license. So Smolak Farms is trying to add, um, to their entertainment license, the barn area, and they're increasing from seasonal to annual. Um, this extends the months of January, February, and March. And then China Blossom is asking to host paint nights under their entertainment license.
What is it, please?
Paint nights.
Oh, when you're in, and they learn how to paint something.
It's, it's, I guess it's a separate-
You just have to add it to what they're asking.
To their entertainment license, yes, it needs to be listed. And then, um, the Trinitarian Congressional Church is, again, asking to have their yearly license renewal fee waived. I do believe Vice President Doggett is here for licensing as well, if we have any question to him about the Meramec licenses, although they are all, um, in order. And I believe we also have someone from Stevens Colledge who's here, um, if we have any questions about her entertainment license, and I think I saw an update come through today on that, um, that they're no longer asking for cars or movie nights, correct?
Okay.
Okay, so let's take it, any questions so far, if you want to have a chance to review?
Do we, we historically waive the Trinity Church?
We have since I've been here, yes.
Um, with regards to Stevens Colledge, there's a question, where are we with the CPC application from last year?
We are not in agreement on the terms right now and are still negotiating.
Okay.
And it's, what does Smolak want to use their barn for? Most of big events, but.
I think they're just trying to host more events inside, um, over the winter, but let me just see if there's anything else in the- They have a new, um, events person that they've hired, who I think has been, um, doing a good job of aggressively bringing in new events. Let's see if she wrote anything extra. Yeah, so it says that they may have some instrumental music, four instruments, low acoustics. It's really not that different from their, um, application has ever been in the past, except that they're just trying to add additional ones on. And all of the safeguards that we had historically put in place for them are still there.
And it might be for weddings, for weddings, yeah.
Wedding weddings. Nothing, out of what, out of the norm, of what they're doing currently, yeah. Just a different space, yeah, yeah, just a different space.
Okay, any other questions, do you want any, any more time to run through the list?
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve all the license renewal applications on the list provided by the town clerk's office and waive the entertainment license fee for the Trinitarian Congressional Church.
I have a motion, a second?
I'll second that.
And a second A for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are approved. Item B two.
All right, the incomplete applications, these ones aren't quite as easy. So if you remember last year, we were in a similar situation with some of our licenses, that they had missing documents. So we, last year, ended up voting those licenses contingent. So what we did last year was, we said as long as their information was in by the end of the year, and I know that Laurie has written a wonderful motion for us, so I don't know why I'm not just referring to it, but as long as it's subject, no later than December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, that we would allow those licenses to move forward, we just did them contingent. So we have four that are missing the certificate of inspection, that's Edifer Pizzeria, Cow's Rock, Starbucks, and Jamie's. Jamie's is a little bit of an interesting situation, so they actually cannot get their inspection right now because they are in the situation that they're in. So it's not that, the building inspector does not approve any inspection, he's just saying, I can't. So we had recommended that perhaps it made sense to approve and renew subject to receipt of the certificate of inspection prior to the date of reopening and to prorate that fee when they went ahead and were able to reopen. We have, yeah, I mean, I think that would be very helpful. We have five businesses that are currently, don't have their certificate of good standing, so that's Bertucci's, The Pizza Factory, Golden Seal Apothecary, Jackie Transportation, and Cow's Rock. So those five, again, we could do them contingent. We have one business who unfortunately has passed due taxes, had entered into a payment plan with the town treasurer, and unfortunately did not make their payment in compliance with that payment plan, and so that's Rolfs. And so if those taxes are not paid in full, we will not be able to issue that license per our policy.
Payment on the fifteen hundred or the ten thousand?
So, in my opinion, since they're now out of compliance with their payment plan, you typically would do the entire payment. As of four thirty today, that payment had not been made.
How far back do these taxes go?
So it would have been paid in full last year, because we didn't have given them their license, so it would have to be this year's taxes. A payment, you know, a payment plan can be a dangerous thing because it doesn't, when you enter into a payment plan with the town treasurer, she's not allowed to defer the interest, so your interest continues to compound daily on unpaid taxes. So it can be hard because what ends up actually happening is that you end up kind of in a worse spot, yeah.
So it's possible that we could approve it contingent on her paying, being completely paid.
Yes.
By December.
You could do that.
When was the fifteen hundred dollars due?
Today, by four thirty.
As a part of the payment plan, the rest of the taxes are already passed due.
Yeah, everything's already passed due, but the payment plan that was entered into was due today.
So if, if that fifteen hundred dollars had been paid, then the payment plan would still be outstanding, would it still be?
It would still be in effect, yes.
But by not paying the fifteen hundred dollars, that payment plan is now null and void?
Yeah, because it was actually the down payment that would have triggered the payment plan, right?
And what you're saying is, in traditional payment plan, that's essentially default, which means it accelerates the rest of the payments?
Yes.
So can we maybe give them till the end of day, like Thursday or Friday, to come down with that payment, that down payment, and then?
So we'd have to get the permission of the town treasurer, she's the only one who can enter into a payment plan. We certainly can ask her to make changes to her plan, she's the only one who's authorized by state law to do it.
But.
And we can, we could do that, or allow her more time to pay the full.
We could say by December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, yeah.
She has to pay it. What are the steps? So what, so say we don't approve, she loses her license, then she has to reapply.
She's to completely reapply it from the very beginning, yes.
What's the cost?
It's the same cost as the annual fee, which, do you know what that is?
So it's more process than cost, is that?
She said it's about three thousand dollars to pay, but it, I mean, someone could, if, let's say for instance, there wasn't any licenses available, someone could sweep into the license, there's a lot of different things that.
I'd say that's the whole state thing.
Have to go through the entire state process again, yes. In, you know, additional wrinkles that they now have the restaurant, that's not owned by them, attached to the rest, to the bar, so there's a lot of different, a lot of different things that are in effect.
I know there's no, you know, reason for the town to reach out, but did anybody try to reach out to see if?
So, yes, seven times, I believe, she was called the boat.
Multiple, emails, telephone calls. And the application wasn't, wasn't submitted, well, she didn't even submit the application until December seventh, and it was due on November tenth.
Do we have precedence?
So what you could do, so we do, we have a, we have a business last year that we did not renew their license.
But we've, and we've also given extent, like, we've given conditional.
We've done, in the past, we've done conditional, yes, we've done, we did a lot of conditional ones last year.
So we have precedents both directions, okay.
And then last year, one of the conditional did not meet the conditions and did not receive their license. So if we wanted, we could do it contingent on either a satisfactory payment plan with the town treasurer or payment in full. That way, the town treasurer can find another way to do it, I could speak with her and see if there is, and if not, then she, they'd have to pay in full.
So say the fifteen hundred dollars came in today, when would they have been current based on the payment plan? Do, like?
So I believe it's fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay, so that would have taken.
With daily interest.
With daily interest, and that doesn't alleviate the taxes that they're incurring
That are going to.
Twenty twenty-four.
Moving forward, yeah.
And back in the day, they used to do, be able to do a thing that you could put that, those payments down and pay the principal, so that the interest wouldn't compound as much, but they're not allowed to do that anymore, that changed with the Monetization Act, so it just continues to.
So in your experience, people on payment plans don't, do they get current?
People on payment, yeah, it's a lot like, I mean, it's a lot like somebody who owes money on their taxes, right? They may end up in multiple payment plans, which is unfortunate, but remember, we have a ninety-eight percent collection rate, so in this community, we don't really see this happen that often.
And would a payment plan be structured in such a way where a default automatically causes a loss of license?
Typically not, so once you, once you grant the license, if it's contingent on, like, the payment plan starting, it would be, it would be next year. Like, it'd be very unusual that we would come back to you and say, please pull this license.
But then there's no.
Your teeth would be literally next year, you'd have this ten thousand.
If it was not.
Right back to where we are in here today.
And we would just have.
Historically, they're behind on taxes, correct?
I don't believe this is a new problem. It's a tough situation.
I mean, I feel like the biggest flexibility is giving them till the thirty-first to pay in full.
Can I just request that you do noon on the twenty-ninth, because we're not working on the thirty-first?
And honestly, last year, Dawn and I did stay, and we waited on the thirty-first.
Two days are not gonna make a difference.
No, no.
I think it's fair to give the opportunity, for sure, so.
But with respect to the payment plan, that you said that could be entered with the, with the treasurer again, I mean, is that an option?
So I do, I definitely have to ask her if there's any restrictions, I don't know what the payment plan that she already entered into said. I've seen some that will say that if you default, there's no other option, other, right, so I, but I don't know, and she is the only one authorized, so I have to check in with her, and that's why I said it would really have to be an or, like, if we couldn't get to a place where there's a successful payment plan, then it would need to be in full. Kim, the treasurer is super easy to work with, and I think tries her hottest to get people in a good place.
I mean, if we put the contingency of, you know, a, working out a new payment plan on there, and she paid in full and was up to date, like, that would still be an option.
But we would have, like, it's almost like, if we put the payment plan in place, it's like, it's gotta be one, one more time, like, right?
We have to revisit, yeah.
It would have to be like, you need to make the payment.
So if, so if they fail to meet the terms of the payment plan, that would, could go on for a year before it comes back to us.
And then you could end up with twenty, I could be standing in front of you telling you, we have twenty thousand dollars in unpaid taxes, right? It's, that's a difficult.
That's a different scenario.
Didn't, didn't file on time, that we, I feel like we have a lot of things that are just tick marks against this particular applicant, and it's just.
I mean.
I wouldn't say, I mean, I think I agree with Laurie, that's, it's kinda like, I feel like we're at the, we're at the end.
I mean, I just.
You never want to do it to a business, but I'm responsible, I get it, it's, we have an obligation to businesses, to be fair enough, all businesses.
I mean, I, I just, you see both sides of it, right? Like, then you're unfair to the businesses that complied, right? And have, are current?
No, I get that, I see. Yeah, whatever the board wants to do.
The license has expired at this point, or has expired at the end of the year?
End of the year.
End of the year, okay, so stuck, not closing their doors tomorrow, yeah, okay.
It's fair to give, in my opinion, till the end of the year for either A or B, whatever it is that we decide on.
We don't, we meet again this year?
No, just Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay, all right.
So that's why, I mean, that's why we do.
So we can't, we can't table it, yeah, we couldn't table it.
That's why we do the contingent.
Got it, okay, got it.
And then what happens is if they don't end up coming into compliance, I let the police know, because they are the licensing enforcement authority, and we head in and let them know that they no longer have a license.
And what will, so if we decide to say they need to be current by December twenty-ninth or enter a payment plan, then who reaches out to them to tell them that?
The town clerk's office, yep.
Can't put a contingency in the license that if they don't adhere to the license, the payment plan, that the license gets revoked?
Right.
So I mean, I could bring it back to you, if they don't adhere to the payment plan, we could put that in the payment plan, so.
If there was another payment plan, we could, that could be part of it.
That could be part of it. I'd wanna make sure we wrote that into the contract, though.
Yeah, that's how to put some teeth into it anyway.
Yes. I like that idea.
Who can craft this motion?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Complicated.
No, I just, I think of commercial leases, right, where a lot of times tenants get opportunities to cure defaults and cure, but then all of a sudden, if you, if you're out of strikes, you can't say you weren't warned, right? So that's why I do like the idea in a payment plan, long-term, of, hey, you just got, you gotta stay current with us. So we're not in this situation at the end of the year.
I'm reading it right now, hold on a second.
So will you have to talk with the collector and come back to?
They would have to decide if that is a viable option.
Yep, I'm just.
Right, which I guess we have to decide tonight, are we okay with the plan B, right? Which maybe if that's not an option.
Is it full payment by?
Payment, payment in full by the twenty-ninth, the one fifty-nine, or whatever, yeah.
I'm just.
While the town manager's doing that, I just wanted to thank the town clerk's office, there's goes, there's a lot of work that goes into this, and Suzanne has done a phenomenal job, and Dawn has done a phenomenal job of, of getting all this to, to this point today, and it, it wasn't easy, so I just wanna give a shout out to them.
No, I, we absolutely appreciate that, like, my first time going through it and seeing just the list of everything we must have to keep track of to keep it enforced, it's, and the fact that things don't fall through the cracks around here is really, really remarkable and impressive, and very much appreciated.
So I think something like moves the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners renew the request of North Andover Resident Incorporated DBA Rolfs, subject to either a new payment plan if negotiated by the treasurer, or a payment in full by December twenty-ninth. The payment plan shall contain language that requires monthly payments to be current, or the license shall be moved to a hearing of the licensing commission.
Impressive, Melissa.
So we still have the other one to do before we get?
Yes, yes, yeah. I'm happy to take, if you want, if you want to just review that language a little more, you wanna take the other motions and?
It's up to you.
That's up to me. Oh, great. While Melissa rereads that language, why don't we, I'll take a motion on the prior two incomplete applications.
I'll move that the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners approve and renew the licenses for Edifer Pizzeria, Cow's Rock, Starbucks Coffee, number seven zero nine four five, Bertucci Restaurant LLC, Pizza Factory, Golden Seal Apothecary, and Jackie Transportation LLC, subject to this, to the receipt of certificates of inspection no later than December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and certificates of good standing by January sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Do we need a motion for Jamie's?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I'll also move that the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners approve and renew the license for Jamie's Restaurant, subject to the receipt of the certificate of inspection prior to the date of reopening and to prorate the fee from the date of opening until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now back to Rolfs, we, we're dismissed that a little bit more, I think the only thing I didn't hear is what happens if the treasurer cannot enter into that new payment plan?
So then it would have to be a payment in full, right?
Okay, would have to be a payment in full, yeah, okay.
So move that the Select Board acting as license commissioner renew the license of North Andover Restaurant Inc., DBA Rolfs, subject to either a new payment plan if negotiated by the treasurer, or payment in full by December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. The payment plan shall contain language that requires monthly payments to be current, or the license shall be moved to a hearing of the licensing commission. Noon on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Okay, so I will make that motion as read.
And I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, close of likely licensing commission. I will take a motion to exit.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, all yours.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes, as everybody had a chance to read the November thirteenth and the November twenty-seventh minutes.
Happy I relived that one, yeah.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, I'll make, I'll move approval of the open session minutes from November thirteenth and November twenty-seventh as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion or edits? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to Select Board updates.
We had a meeting on Tuesday of the website redesign committee, so we're meeting almost monthly at this point with a consultant, so coming along, good to see some design inspiration ideas, so if there's anything that particularly vexes you about the current website, or you'd like to see a new one, let me know, we'll make sure it gets in the design.
I have things to say.
But, but Sarah and Christine and John have all been fantastic and keeping me on my toes, so.
All I want is a widget that says which week it is for recycling on the DPW page, that's all I want.
I like that idea. It's in.
Breakfast with Santa is coming up, right, in, on December seventeenth, at the senior center, that's exciting. Merchants Association had a very cool first-year event for the gingerbread walk at the lodge.
Those are pretty amazing.
Oh, they did the, they did houses, the businesses made houses.
At the lodge, yeah.
And you could buy wrap tickets, and a lot of them came with gift cards and stuff like that, so small first year, but a really low-key, fun, easy, inexpensive way to spend this afternoon.
Those are cute, yeah.
Yeah, Downer Brothers did an amazing job at the road.
Yeah, that was, that's really nice what they did.
So thank you to them.
The gingerbread, the wreaths, right, the lights, the common, it all looks great. Anyone else?
Um, we had a meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee this evening. Um, and just, you know, kudos to that committee. I know, I think they're going to be coming in in the next couple of meetings to give an update on where that, that, where we stand. But of the hundreds of, um, strategies that are on that plan, I think there's only fourteen at this point that haven't been somehow touched.
That's impressive.
The work has been really, they've, you know, really been outstanding.
That's great. Um, I would just recommend all the, everybody check out Master Plan Mondays because they're keeping us up to date on the construction. It's very exciting to see, so, um, looks like foundation's in, slabbed at the middle school, and the undergrounds are being done, and so.
Progress, progress.
Kittredge is.
Oh, and Kittredge, yep, there. We're, um, gonna put the RFS out for the designer application, so that'll be exciting to see that starting to move forward. Um, so that's very exciting.
I wonder how many renovations the middle school has had when it was first the high school.
Right.
Wow.
And there was the addition, right, and the ninety-six renovation.
One's in his four in Greatmont Road.
I know, I was surprised by that. I didn't realize how many different iterations.
Town manager update?
Sure. First, I want to congratulate Dee, who's becoming an ICMA credentialed manager in January.
Congratulations.
Yes, she's only thirty-five in Massachusetts, so it's pretty awesome. Uh, and two of them are here, right? Holy smokes. Um, and then Lynn, who got her, um, GFOA Financial Reporting Award, as we knew she would. She actually filled an entire plaque, and they had to send us a new one. So we've moved on to a second page of awards, which is very exciting. Um, and then I just wanted to remind people that our wreath contest is open until Friday, and it's very close right now. So I know, um, Taylor Swift has not voted yet, last year she did, so we're all just waiting for it to happen. But it is a good, fun competition between all the different departments, so we do enjoy it.
I like the Turkey Town.
Thank you.
That one spoke to.
Mm-hmm.
Those of us who've been here a long time.
Yeah, we got a lot of glue gun burns working on that in the octaves. Some cuts, yep. Yep, but it's a good team-building exercise for the different departments, and it gets very intense.
People get really into it, you know?
They do.
Like, I see it, it's mentioned a lot.
Very intense, so.
Scarlett keeps getting a little nod. She got one at the gingerbread house.
That might be, that might be cheating, I don't know. Pull it at the heartstrings.
Hopefully she doesn't get to that one. I think it has dog bones on it, so.
Yeah, yeah. She's working really hard, too. Oh, my gosh. I love the updates, so.